Well, good evening. I'm Abby Stilly. I'm the parent of a student at Kelly Middle School. And I'm here because Kelly parents have not been encouraged to attend or have been notified about the North Region planning meetings. It's clear from watching the recorded meetings, though, and looking at the data and talking to students that the district is not providing an equitable education experience at this point for that school. One example is the lack of a library. The library at Kelly is used for many things due to lack of space, but probably least used as a library. Students at Kelly have checked out 664 books this year. At Madison, a similarly sized school, students have checked out 1,892. The difference? Madison has a library staff, as does every other middle school in the district. Kelly has not a library staff and does not have a dedicated library space. At a school where more than 60% of the students aren't meeting grade level expectations in English, it really seems to me like we should prioritize books and reading. We ask why Kelly students can't have elective standards to other middle schools like theater, woodshop, or home ec. We ask why Kelly students can't have enrichment activities like robotics or OBOB. Every time, we are told the same thing. There isn't space, there isn't funding, and there isn't staff to do it. But other schools in the district managed to come up with those three things. I believe that the school district is judged by how it treats the students who are struggling the most. Kelly consistently ranks lowest in test scores, as I referenced in the infographic I sent the board yesterday. Decisions the school board has made and will make soon play a role in shaping the future of these students. Something isn't right here when our students, who should be benefiting from the most resources the district has to offer, are getting the least. That's not how I understand equity. I want you to consider foremost not the ever diminishing amount of funding left in the bond, but what an equitable education experience for students at Kelly would look like. And please find a way to make that happen. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Stilly. Our next speaker tonight is Michael Donanute.
Michael, the situation with the timer is the same, so I'll just put my timer on and when we get to the end, I hope that you're able to find a way to wrap it up. I apologize for the shits.
Thank you for the opportunity for public comment. I am one of many community members that must speak out about the curriculum that has been allowed in gene public schools and the lack of public review by its leaders. When it was finally made public last week that the students within gene public schools were subjugated to a sexual fantasy assignment, I, along with many community members, were left another shock, outraged that students were not protected, and disgusted that any public employee involved with harvesting sexual fantasies from minors were still employed by the district. It's hard to turn the other cheek when the curriculum implemented by the gene public school leaves students in a vulnerable position, feeling violated, embarrassed, and taken advantage of. When I look around at organizations within this community, if a manager or supervisor made one comment, even remotely close to that, they would be terminated on the spot. Yet, the people at Churchill High School, a leader in position of power, not only asked students about their private social fantasies, but required minors, some as young as 15, to document and upload their sexual fantasies in writing as a graded assignment. Sadly, they do not have the same protections that an adult professional has. Equally disturbing is the lack of public condemnation prior to tonight from district leaders, or even a simple apology to those students. With the exception of Board Member Gordon, thank you for speaking up. The silence of those in power is deafening. The silence leaves the door of moral bankruptcy wide open for students and parents to wonder who's there to protect them, who's there to stand up for them. I can only come to two things. Either the leaders were okay with this curriculum before it became public, or the leaders in this district are too cowardly to stand up through the bureaucracy and send a clear message to our youth that they have their back. I urge this board to adopt a policy that safeguards our students and holds district employees accountable for abuses of power when it involves a minor. There is a war being waged for the youth of America and its hearts and minds and spirits. I urge you, protect our students. Do not let the cultural, moral bankruptcy enter schools and run the halls. Have their back.
It's Carter here. Okay, we'll go to the next one. Dusty Strachan.
Hello, I would like, I am a student of North Region High School, and I would like to come to the board and express some frustrations that have been happening over at North Region High School. A few weeks ago, a group of students, including me, went to our counselor to have them submit some reports against some incidents that had occurred. One of those reports was meant and reassured to us that would be completely anonymous. I found out not hours later that office staff had leaked some information about that anonymous report to students. Part of the information that was leaked was partially true but not fully, and led to a much bigger situation than it should have been. The fear of making reports and lack of response from admin many times that we can make reports makes it very anxiety inducing for students to want to go make any kind of report against actions that should not be allowed in our schools. Yet, we find out that even when we want to have that backing and pillow of anonymous reporting, that it's not able to be super anonymous. I went and talked to our admin about this problem about a week ago, right when it happened. And so far, I have not heard or seen anything done about it. I am not the only one who is, this is not the only situation where this has occurred. Not hours later, when I was waiting in the office area to speak with the admin, witnessed an office aide, one of the students, asked about an envelope, and that envelope was then given to that student, which I don't think the blame is on the student, since they were just curious. But the office aide basically told, the office staff told the student that they can read it as long as they do not tell who they got from. I think this is appalling to the fact that people are not able to have privacy within submitting reports, and it just makes the whole situation a lot scarier, because it can lead to a lot more dire consequences than a little more drama.
Thank you. Thank you, Dusty. Our next speaker is Sonya Carlson.
Thank you, I'm Sonya Carlson. I am here tonight as a Kelly parent of a sixth grader, and I'm here to bring your attention to issues concerning equity, safety, and communication. As the school year progressed, I noticed, I started to notice that there weren't many extracurricular activities, field trips, or engaging experiences outside of class time to enrich and excite students. I suggested connecting with established programs that are facilitated through organizations like Brain, but gained no traction. When parents inquire about this at parent group meetings, we were told there isn't space or staff to support extra efforts outside of the BEST program. BEST cited materials outline and enrollment is capped and that students are required to attend every day or risk being dropped. At this school care program covers a special critical need, but it is not a substitute for other enriching opportunities. The lack of space is in large part due to the fact that YG and Kelly have been sharing the school leaving both without adequate facilities. It is public knowledge that the 4J school district submitted a bid for the E-Wed building in January. While generally, that seems like a wonderful opportunity, we can make no mistake that resources are limited. And it is willing to see this ever put forth when we have two schools branded one. How does the school district have the resources to offer purchase on their building but can't find an adequate solution for students of Kelly and YG? Back in October, my son called me at 4:00 p.m. to let me know that he'd missed the bus. When I arrived 15 minutes later, I was appalled to watch as his school bus was leaving, 40 minutes late. No communication about the late bus was provided to the school staff, and subsequently, the students and their parents. When I called the office, the first person I talked to told me that teachers leave at 4:00 p.m. and have no way to contact parents. I was later assured by the principal that this isn't the case, but the experience left me concerned. I understand that staffing issues persist, as they do everywhere. This should not be an excuse to put our children at risk. Jump ahead to Thursday, March 2nd. When parents received a text that Kelly Middle School is currently on secure lockdown, there is no threat inside the building. Neighboring school is on lockdown, we're taking precautions. Now, this is a frightening experience for students inside the school and for parents who live in fear of another revolving where police stood outside for 45 minutes while children, let's be honest, children of color were massacred. Kelly is one of the most disadvantaged and diverse schools in the region, and I urge you to do something to focus on them. Give them the support they need. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carlson. Our next speaker tonight is Michael Litten.
Two minutes, let's get to it. Hello, first of all, Gordon, thank you for making a personal statement about your stance against this curriculum. And in fact, this type of inappropriate material does not belong in our schools, of which we had a superintendent that would have done the same. My name is Michael Litten. I'm a graduate of Bailey Hill Elementary, Kennedy Middle School, Churchill High School, and Western Oregon University. Currently, I'm a Director of Human Resources for a local family-owned business here in Eugene. My family and friends have been employed by this district for over 40 years, and to say I take, or used to take, pride in this district would be an understatement. Today, I'm ashamed. Ashamed of what we have become and will be staying for, or will be built to stand up for as an educational community. In my profession, I sit with employees to discuss their performance and the potential for corrective action, and sometimes, the termination of their employment. It's called a performance review. Today, I stand here before you and need you to know you have not performed to our expectations. You have not done your job. And you all work for us, so like a bad performance review, you're being put on notice. I remember a time when we celebrated success in this district. Attention was focused on facts, objective material, success, and the future. How in the world did this curriculum and assignment pass the test of achieving that? As a parent, I'm always teaching my kids if you feel what's right. Trust your gut and stand up for what you believe. And they do. Did you guys do that when reviewing this curriculum? Did you even review it? Did you do your job? Me saying no. You have lost your moral compass. You're more focused on the dysfunction as a board than the positive educational development of our children. Are you making sure that the district is following the training that you receive through Safe Schools, provided by Vector? In this training, they specifically focus on the areas of mandatory reporting, child abuse, and understanding boundaries. So again, I ask you, how does this assignment, or even the curriculum, come close to passing the filters from you all as a district, from the superintendent, or to the school itself? Why did nobody stand up and say, "I don't believe this to be appropriate", and stand up for what they believe? Did anybody ever think for themselves? Did any of you think that this might be completely irrelevant and inappropriate for an adult to have these conversations with a minor? The only times I've ever heard or seen something presented to a minor from an adult, Chris Hansen has jumped out of a closet and said, "What were you thinking?", followed by a prompt arrest on national television. But if we do this in school, we call it educational? I'm short on time, so I'll just say this. We deserve better. Our kids deserve better. If you are incapable of providing the security, safety, and discretionary decision-making needed by a school district, you don't need to be fired, you need to quit.
Our next speaker tonight is Sheena Bean.
Members of the 4J School Board, my name is Sheena Bean. I have three students in 4J and have always been a promoter of public school systems. Access to a free, fair, quality education is a bedrock of our democracy. Our children have the right to learn in a school that offers a rigorous curriculum, dedicated community involvement, and a staff and teachers who esteem the responsibility they have to shape the next generation. Oregon's public schools are failing. We currently rank 41st in the nation and have one of the lowest graduation rates. Less than 45% of our students are reading at grade level. We should be focusing on academic readiness in our classes and not asking our students to describe their sexual fantasies to our teachers. There is no excuse for this kind of sexually explicit assignment. The 4J school district is placing the blame on the OWL curriculum itself and stated that, quote, "The OWL curriculum is used in districts all over Oregon." If this is so, I would like to know of one other school district in our state who has given their class this assignment. The teacher, Mr. Miller, chose to give this assignment. And if this is a pre-approved part of the OWL curriculum, it should be removed, and I'm glad to hear that it is. If the teacher did indeed choose this, he should be immediately removed from the staff at Churchill until a full third-party investigation can take place. As the parent of a high school student, I cannot see this assignment as anything other than a blatant attempt to promote an immoral sexual agenda to our children. The inherent power differential that exists between an adult teacher or coach and his students has been utterly disregarded. In a culture that professes to value consent above all else, I would like to acknowledge that the children in this class did not consent to be sexual entertainment for their teacher or for a school district with no regard for their safety or propriety. This is ignorance at best and pedophilia at worst. I encourage this board to show their commitment to a safe and inclusive school environment by immediately calling for a full investigation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bean. Our next speaker is Amy Klein.
My name is Amy Klein. I have a freshman at Churchill. I have to change this a little bit, because I do appreciate your apology about this. So I'm not going to talk about the second assignment, but I please hope that you do investigate it, as we do have a father in the group, in the class, that says his daughter told him about that class. I won't go there, it's disgusting, and I'm not going to talk about it. I know you yourselves do not direct or decide day-to-day operations, and that there are avenues of which to request or consider reasons of material. But seeing as how you were already in the middle of searching on a new curriculum, I wanted to share my thoughts while you were doing your research. I know you are constantly challenged, especially when it comes to sex ed. But this feels like most people on all sides of the aisles agree upon it, so I needed to speak. I'd like to begin with an exercise. I apologize. Please pull out a piece of paper and write a short story of a sexual fantasy of yours. But women deserve include penetration and any kind of oral sex. Choose three items, romantic music, candles, massage oil, feather bella, and flavored syrups to use in your story. Please turn that into me, a stranger in an authority position. Does that make you uncomfortable?
Yes.
Now imagine being a child in a classroom amongst your peers. Imagine you're a child that is actively being abused or has previously been abused and being asked to go through these assignments. If this is considered inappropriate for online conversations with minors or evening conversations, or even work conversations, who deems this as school appropriate? My friend got her daughter through this program at her church and had to attend a two-hour information session before her child was even allowed to go through the program. They used two trained facilitators from the classroom. Why was this informative session not offered to parents? Whose choice was it to differ from the curriculum and not the two facilitators? Are teachers trained specifically on this program? Is it standard policy to accept sex ed curriculums from churches? Is there a policy of investigating teachers when there are claims of abuse of power? Does this curriculum allow for changes of assignments, and does anyone have to approve that? Please ask yourself these questions as you are deciding on your next curriculum. Let's give this teacher the benefit of the doubt and say he's following protocol. I hope you can see the door that this opens to the chance of abuse. When there have been multiple reports of children being abused on the red every week, including at schools, I hope you can appreciate your concern. I beg you to review your policies, find junior approval processes, involve parents, and have 100% transparency about what is actually happening in these classes, and give us the opportunity to choose what is appropriate for our children, the choice to opt out, or the choice to read material ahead of time. Because school is supposed to be a safe place and rightfully responsible.
Our next speaker is online, Mariko Plushia. Are you with us, Mariko? I do not see how it, um, we'll see if Jonathan Voucher is online by Zoom. We can move forward with our guest to sign up as a speaker. Would you like us to pick five, or would we do all six?
I think we should just do all six.
Our first speaker is Justin LaCombe.
Good evening. Many of you know me, so I am here to discuss this atrocity of assignments. I want to first say, you're a liar. It's not a rumor. I have the proof right here in my phone of the whom with you, with whom would you do it with? And my daughter specifically stated that the teacher put up a wheel on the class board, and it stated anal penetration, oral sex, licking of ear, kissing. And he wanted them to write down the initials of a boy or girl that they would do these activities with. Now, I don't know what's worse, wanting to know my child's sexual fantasy or who they're going to have anal penetration and oral sex with. What is he gaining from this? What do you gain from this information? Why has my daughter, that naively did the assignment? Because she's scared. She wants to get good grades. She wants to be, you know, get her license. She has to get good grades. And so she does this assignment. Where's the assignment? Why hasn't she had it turned back to her with her grade on it? What is he doing with it? Is this for his spank bank? Is he literally using this for his sexual deviant? These are questions that need to be answered. He verbally abused, verbally sexually abused every single child in that classroom. You look up the definition. I gave you the paper for the definition of verbal sexual abuse. Now, sexual abuse is sexual abuse. So where's the criminal charges? Why is he still teaching? Is it because he's the football coach? And Churchill's doing good? Don't want to lose that hype? Because football doesn't matter when it comes to our children. Okay? This sexual deviant needs to be removed. If you do not remove him, I am giving you my word to date that tomorrow morning, I will go down to the county clerk's office and I will file for the removal of every single one of you.
Our next speaker is Mariko, who is on Zoom now, and we need to see.
Hello, everyone. My name is Mariko Plushia. I am a resident of Eugene and the parent of a 4J student. I'm making comment today to ask school board members to use Student Success Act funds toward more support staff and working towards smaller class sizes. This is a matter of equity. More staff and smaller class sizes will affect a number of issues, including the ability to respond to racism, bullying, dire student mental health, accessibility for disabled students, and retention and mental health for teachers and educators. My son is a student at Monroe Middle School, and we really appreciate and like our school, our principal, teachers, and our staff. And we appreciate their swift reaction when racist incidents come up, because they do consistently, or when students are bullied or face dire mental health concerns, including self-harm. But there simply is not enough staff to help address these matters, to help students work through these problems together. This lack of sufficient adult supervision and assistance is detrimental to the students and educators. Post-COVID, more than ever, we need smaller classes and more help in the schools. More support for students and educators. Please direct Student Success Act funding toward more staff and smaller class sizes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mariko. Our next speaker is Erica Dustin.
Hello, my name is Erica Dustin. I'm from Rashid, Oklahoma. I'm a parent of one parent and two former students in the district. First thing I wanted to say this evening is thank you so much to our students, all of you, the student rights, for being here, especially my child at Churchill High School. So thank you for your leadership at the high school. You know, I didn't know I was going to speak tonight, so I don't have a planned speech. But what I did want to say is, what a great thing that we have so many parents and community members here that care so much about our students. Even though we may not all agree on things, the fact that we can have a nuanced discourse about a relatively difficult subject means that there's a lot of positive energy here. So I appreciate that. I do, I am not speaking on behalf of any organization or committee or council. I just want to make that clear. This is my own personal opinions. And I am not speaking directly about this incident at Churchill. But what I do want to say is the importance of comprehensive sex education. Comprehensive sex education, we have multiple studies from the American Academy of Pediatrics, the American College of Gynecologists, the American Medical Association. But it's shown in multi-year longitudinal studies that having comprehensive sex ed decreases pregnancies, decreases STIs, decreases risky sexual activities and behaviors, decreases the risk of sexual partners young people may have. But it's not just that. It helps teach young people about healthy relationships. Having comprehensive sex ed helps decrease domestic violence, intimate partner violence. It teaches students about healthy boundaries and relationships. And part of that is trying to acknowledge when there is, you know, any kind of inappropriate behavior from a person of power or an adult. It is so important for the health and safety of our students to have comprehensive sex ed. Not only does it help them have less STIs, it helps decrease homophobia, bullying, better understanding of diversity of students. But it does need to be trauma-informed, especially when children have a history of sexual violence against them. So I think it's important that we have trauma-informed comprehensive sex education. So thank you so much to all the community for everybody being here tonight and speaking. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dustin. Our next speaker is Steve Corin.
Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Steve Corin. I have a sixth grader at Kelly Middle School. And I'm coming here to ask you for emergency action on two points. One is to please, I thank you for taking the time to meet the staff of Kelly and the students of Kelly. And I'm asking you to please reach out and speak to the parents of Kelly, those that are willing to come here, and those that wouldn't necessarily be comfortable coming here and hearing from their voice. Okay? The other urgency is to act, to make sure that Kelly and students at Kelly can have the facilities, such things as libraries, spaces for electives, spaces for band, spaces to walk the halls safely. Numerous kids, my daughter has reported getting hurt. I've heard from staff members saying, "I won't go in the hallways and pass in periods. It's too many kids in a hallway." Asking for what is equal to the other middle schools. But this isn't any other middle school. And so, and our district has committed to equity. So the base level of facilities aren't there for quality. All of the other middle schools have things that Kelly doesn't have. And so I'm asking you to please act with urgency on this. On a recent meeting with a staff member, a staff member said, "You wouldn't want this for your children." My daughter's there. I want my daughter at Kelly. She's amazing teachers, she's amazing kids there. Please provide the space that matches and gives the opportunities for these incredibly brilliant kids with great futures to have all the experiences that the rest of the kids in the other schools are having.
Thank you, Mr. Corin. Jonathan Veltcher signed up to speak via Zoom. I just want to make sure that Jonathan's not in the audience. Follow him. Our next speaker then is Nicholas.
I'm a property owner in Eugene, and I don't have children. I pay property taxes and I want my money back. You're all about sexual deviants, you support it, pedophilia. This woman over here can't even barely read. You're a joke. You're a complete failure. All the parents in here, all the parents in here, people getting child abuse?
The rules I outlined at the beginning, you need to stop.
You have, you have. I asked her if there was any guidelines or anything.
Yes, I stated that I'm beginning off the meeting.
I asked for guidelines tonight as a few.
It is not appropriate to comment. It is not appropriate to comment on a student, let alone any member of our 4J unit in a negative way.
Well, we should have students who don't have a read in high school.
You need to step out.
You're being asked to leave by the board chair.
All right, later. Good luck to all of you.
Thank you. I appreciate the audience's support, and I don't think it needs to be said again what our expectations for audience decorum is. We've been applauding and it's gone well, so there's some wiggle room, but commenting negatively on a student board representative is unacceptable. It will never be acceptable.
I think got the first applause of the evening. Earlier on.
Our next speaker tonight is Emily Ashton.
Hi, my name is Emily Ashton. I'm a student at Churchill High School. I was not planning to speak, but I do want to start with why the issues with Mr. Miller are relevant to me. I already said I'm a student at Churchill High School. I have a class with Mr. Miller. I take his strength and conditioning class. And I am one of the presidents of Feminist Student Union at my school, and I can be a voice for a lot of students that attend. I want to start with prefacing that I'm obviously not in his health class, which clearly makes my opinions about it irrelevant. I went to our vice principal, I talked to her about my concerns, I tried to be a voice for the student body, and she dismissed it because I'm not in her class. So I would like to talk about my experiences in his zero COVID class. I have heard from multiple female students, as well as seen it myself. He stares, he winks, he touches them to fix their form. People, you are all saying that it is the curriculum, but it is clearly the teacher if it's happening in more than just his health class. Students are uncomfortable, they have not been attending class since the issues. I have not been attending. He has not done anything to me, and I have not been attending, and I will not attend his class again. Additionally, as one of the presidents of FSU, we decided to bring this up in Feminist Student Union last Friday. People have mentioned this is a sexual abuse and a sexual harassment issue. It is a feminist issue. And we brought it up, and what happened is that adults in the bathroom swarmed around all of us, and they told us that we had to shut it down. We didn't mention his name. We didn't even mention his name. We brought up something on the news. We talk about things that are wrong on the news constantly. We brought up what was happening in the news. We talked about a relevant issue at our school, and we were told that we had to shut it down. This is ridiculous. People are not attending his class, people are uncomfortable outside of his health class. It is not just the health class, it is the teacher.
Our final speaker tonight is Janet Irs.
Thank you, Board, for giving me the time. I'll be short. Three topics. One, I've talked to Superintendent Di about. We'd like to get Colgate's at one in Monroe in Madison earlier this month. There was a stolen car parked on the parking lot during weekend hours. And as you well know, I'm kind of the neighborhood watch. And thank you, Officer Skinner, our safety resource person, great lady. She was quick and efficient in getting this situation removed. This parking lot over the weekend brings about a certain criminal element that comes back up here. The parks and drug activity in the Wicker is well documented, and it puts up to the bike path where a lot of that occurs. Second topic, the contract with Blamette Family, Inc., and the parking space is being utilized at a rock-bottom price. Although I'd like to see the district get out of the rental of their parking lot to a nonprofit agency that has lots of dollars in space to create their own parking lot. I'd like to see the board require facilities to reissue that contract and phase it out. They have space to have their own spaces there. And I see often, a lot of their folks are not parking in the designated parking spaces. Third topic was regard to the Churchill and the OWL. If we pay tax dollars on that, I'd like a double refund, double return and shame on that topic. It borders on feminism, if not child pornography. I've never heard of such stuff, ever. Let's see District 4J shine again. We know it can happen, and let's hope that it does, because that was not a good thing. Thank you.